Uh, City Secretary, would you read the call, please?
Notice of joint meeting, public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville and the Brownsville Planning and Zoning Commission. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that a regular meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville and a joint meeting of the Brownsville Planning and Zoning Commission and City Commission of Brownsville will be held on Tuesday, February the 5th, 2008, at 6:05 PM in the Commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas.
Thank you. If you will rise to please to read this, please.
Thank you. The flag. The flag is raised to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, on the nation under God, indivisible and liberate and just as well. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one and visible.
Reverend John Phillips will be leading us to his location while we're achieving.
Please remember, Dr. Joseph Alempa, he has cancer, he's in therapy. And Ivan Perez, the Marine who was wounded in Iraq, who just lost his bladder. He's having difficulty.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you that you are the great physician and the great healer that can touch us in areas that cause us healing to take place. Lord, we lift up to you these two, one that is sick with cancer. Lord, if it be your will, you'd bring healing to his body, that you are the healer. I pray you'd bring the right people into his life, who would help him in times of need. And pray for this Marine, Lord, as he recovers from his injury, and we pray that you would comfort his family. And I thank you, Father, for our commissioners and our mayor that are here to serve our city. And I thank you for each one of them and their desire to be servants. And I thank you for our wonderful city, a city, Father, that can be a light for people to look to. And I pray, as our commissioners meet and as they plan for the future, I pray that we would keep in mind that we are servants at all times, that we are here to help others and to make our city the greatest place that you can live. I ask your blessings now from this meeting. I ask your protection upon the commissioners and the mayor's families, and may everything we do be pleasing in your sight. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend.
Number one. Item number one, consent agenda items A through K.
Approved.
Second.
There are a motion by Commissioner. As, as, you want, you want to read them, please?
Oh, the A through, through K. Item A is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of January 22nd, 2008. Item B, authorization for the following individuals to incur travel expense. They are individuals from bus, finance, municipal court, office of emergency management, planning, and police. Item C.
Let the miss reflect the list on the agenda.
The list is on the agenda. Item C. Item C is approval on second and final reading of ordinance number 2007-235.74 to consider the creation of the O-51A overlay district as a less restrictive alternative to the O-51 tourist overlay district for sensitive areas that require regulation but less strict as the regulations set forth in the guidelines of the O-51 overlay district. Item D, approval on second and final reading of ordinance number 2007-235.75 to update the city zoning ordinance by deleting and adding to use district. Item E, approval on second and final reading of ordinance number 235-2007-060-S to allow a general retail-specific use in a light retail area over 0.894 acres out of El Jardín subdivision located at Street 3271, Old Port Isabel Road, and near FM 802. Item F, approval on second and final reading of ordinance number 235-2007-062 to rezone from dwelling G to light commercial G classification, like lot 22 of Montezius Acres subdivision located near Coffee Port Road and Minnesota Avenue. Item G, approval on second and final reading of ordinance number 235-2007-063 to rezone from general retail G to apartment G classification, 1.98 acres out of lots 1 through 6, block 2 of Alta Mesa Duplex subdivision located near Alta Mesa Road and near Parade's Line Road.
Excuse me, just for a minute. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if I'm, it's not necessary to actually read each of these in, and I thought that's what I understood you to say, is that we didn't need to do that.
It's okay.
Do you want me to continue?
You're almost finished, but let the miss reflect it. It's based on this that you hear.
Right, consent agenda, that's on the, on the agenda.
Thank you for reading.
You're welcome.
We have a motion by, by the commissioner left the room. Can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Approved by Commissioner Camarillo. Just a second, Commissioner Sisnetos. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No nays? Okay, all motion carries. Item two.
Item two is the joint public hearing of the Brownsville City Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I don't know, Mayor and City Commissioners, we're still waiting for one more member to make a quorum, so I would ask if you could please continue with the regular meeting and then come back to this item.
Can we go to item three, City Secretary?
Item, would it be item five for the mayor? Mayor's report?
Item six, go to item six.
Item six, Commissioner's report.
We'll come back to that, Stella.
Okay. Do we want to go to proclamation?
Mayor, if we could go right now, I have a, I have a couple of.
Well, I guess, who's going to conduct the meeting? Are we going to do item six? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, that's what I'm asking you.
No, that's, item six is.
I'll let you do your report first.
No, please, no, please, no, no, no. Do it. Item six, go ahead, Commissioner, please.
Okay. Just wanted to go over two things. Two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to, to be in Austin to introduce Priscilla Rodriguez and Larry, Larry Law before the, on the, on the floor of the Senate in regards to their Humanities of Texas Achievement Award. I want to acknowledge that it was, it was, one, a privilege for me to be there, two, to talk about what the organization has done and what it means to Brownsville. What was probably even more significant, more important, was the, the words spoken by Texas Governor Perry about the Brownsville Historical Association, but also speaking of Brownsville and some of the great things that, that are occurring to help revitalize downtown Brownsville, and his, his knowledge of the area and some of the great things that the association has done. And so I felt it's important that the public be aware that our Brownsville Historical Association was recognized, and it was a, I think, a great opportunity to show that good things are happening in the area to help revitalize the downtown area, as well as tell the story. And one of the things that I, if I could help you is, it's a story that, there's a story here in this area that hasn't been told for a long time, and BHA is doing that. And from, from the city's perspective, I hope that we will continue to do everything necessary to help in the revitalization process, but as well as in the educational process. One of the things that the governor did mention was $58 billion a year is, is pumped into the Texas economy because of the tourism. And what BHA is doing and all the other museums in Brownsville are helping our tourism and helping us grow our, and stimulate our economy. So I hope we will be able to continue to do that. And again, I want to thank Priscilla, Larry, the board members, their volunteers, their staff, and all the folks that come to visit the museum for all the great and fabulous things that they're doing to help Brownsville be, be this a great community. So I want to thank them. Also, wanted to acknowledge this past weekend, on Saturday, had the opportunity to participate in a bridge-to-bridge cleanup with, with, with the University of Texas at Brownsville, Texas Thomas College. Director of Residence Life, Douglas Stowe, has created, came before beautification committee to create a adopted street program in Brownsville. They took the initiative to establish this program, beautification. We adopted it, and Saturday was the first cleanup. Hopefully, there'll be more. Want to thank them, the vice president, she was out there as well, all the students. We had about 70-plus volunteers. They collected about 58 bags of trash, and it was a fabulous, fabulous effort of everyone. Also, want to thank Public Works. We had some people out there, Mr. Yamas and, and his staff were tremendous to help, to help this, to help this project come to fruition. So I want to thank Public Works, Mr. Torres, and all the things they did to help us get to where we were on Saturday. So I want to thank them, and hopefully, other future organizations will want to adopt this street program. If they are interested, please contact Jolie Rubio, who's the chair of beautification, or they can call the City Secretary's office so we can accommodate. Thank you.
Commissioner Sisnetos?
Yeah.
Mayor, please? I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner. And I'd wish people would, just try to be a little more formal. May I recognize the Commissioner?
Sure.
Or do you want?
Whatever.
Commissioner, please.
Okay, I'd like to touch on some things going on in my district, too. Thank you very much for that report.
First, you know, let me, let me. Let me finish. You're laughing, Commissioner, but everybody's looking at here, and they're saying that we can't conduct the meeting, and it's because of the interruptions that you make. Let me conduct the meeting, okay?
Let me ask you something. I put this on.
I will recognize the Commissioner.
I put this on.
Okay, that's fine.
But I run the meeting.
Learn to go by the rules.
This is not an item or anything like that.
That's why they say we can't conduct the meeting, because everybody goes.
I'd like to hear what you have to say on there.
Now, Commissioner Sisnetos, I'm going to recognize you, and I appreciate you giving your report, and more than happy to, but I get tired of these interruptions.
Do you have anything to say, Commissioner?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Um, I want to add up some stuff that's been going on in, in my district, and I'm happy to report that the Town North Detention Pond is now complete and functioning. It's been long awaited there for a long, long time by the residents of Town North subdivision, and this will help the Town North subdivision and Minnesota Estates subdivision, they can be assured that flooding should no longer be a major problem in the neighborhood this spring. On FM 511, I've been working closely with Texas Department of Transportation, and they've started construction on FM 511, and when completed, this will be a big improvement to our growing community. There is a project that's worth $44 million. That's what's projected by TechDOT, and it'll take about 28 months to complete. And FM 511 is a major entrance to Brownsville that cuts through historical sensitive areas, single-family neighborhoods, and commercial areas. And I'd like to continue to work and support all projects and ordinances that will protect this investment around these areas. On the street reconstruction, there's been a lot of streets that have been reconstructed, repaired in our district. One of them, thank you Commissioner Aguirre, because you were a part real hard with, along with me, and thanks to the other commissioners, on Eagle Drive, that finally got done, and that was a long-awaited project. The expansion of Coffee Port Road, streets in the Town North subdivision, Brownsville Country Club, Palo Verde, Mission Trails, April Gardens have been improved. Improvements have also been done to Price Road, Pablo Quiseo, and we're continuing to work on Morrison Road. Also, the Ascenda Garden subdivision was improved with $800,000 of street reconstruction monies, and the following streets that were reconstructed was Dunkin' Road, Duval Road, Kleberg Road, Willis Street Road, Nunces Avenue, Grace Avenue, and Cameron Avenue. And I, we're currently looking at working on the drainage in those areas. Also, the city purchasing and engineering departments will be opening bids on following streets in Brownsville Country Club, which has come away, Sagua Court, Cuba, Cuernado de Inés, Soroa, Iguana High. And if I don't mention the streets, that doesn't mean that we're not looking at it. We're looking at a lot of streets. So thank you, Mr. Lastra, and I know you've been helping hard on that, on those projects and on those streets. I do understand that streets is the number-one priority for our citizens, and I can assure you that I and my fellow commissioners will work to get the streets done. On the drainage side of the issue is also very important to me, and I've been working with the city manager and with the engineering department to expedite the following drainage project. I'd like to inform everyone that the ponds at the Brownsville Country Club have been deepened to allow for more stormwater retention, and the VICC drainage improvements have been done. Those will help prevent the flood in the VICC, Quell Hollow subdivision, and the surrounding neighborhoods. The drainage has also been improved along FM 802 and the Frontage Road off of Highway 77, and we're continuing to improve those areas. Hold on. I want to touch briefly on the Brownsville Sports Park. All of the infrastructure has been completed, and we're looking at, at opening the fields and starting up soon, and it should be used by this summer. And on the economic development side, I'm working with the city manager and my fellow commissioners to assure that development of the Lowe's Shopping Center is not delayed, because this will bring much added jobs, stores, and restaurants, such as the Olive Garden, to our community. This site is at the intersection of Old Highway 77 and the Frontage Road. There will be a new road built that will have easy access to the expressway over at the Frontage. I'd like to announce that this Saturday, February the 9th, from 10:00 in the morning to 12:00 noon, I will be conducting a, a public forum over at the Brownsville Event Center. We're getting a skate, a skate park done at the Brownsville Sports Park. We've been working real hard on that. And I know everybody drives around the city and is always seeing all these skateboarders and inline skaters and kids on bikes. They don't have any place to call home. So I'm having a, hosting a public forum at the Brownsville Center, Event Center, once again, from 10:00 in the morning to 12:00 noon. We will have blown-up pictures so these kids can come see what we're doing out there, and we can get their input, because they're the ones that are going to eventually be using this park. So I want to encourage everybody, the response in, in the community has been real positive. I've been hearing from a lot of kids, a lot of parents. So please get the word out, and we'll see you there Saturday morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Longoria, would you like to?
Not at the moment.
Commissioner Aguirre, say?
Yes, I'd just like to say, we put this on the agenda, this item, for Commissioner's report, because contrary to belief, we, you do have commissioners that are going out there, working, trying to improve the city and the things we do here. You've heard a few. I wanted to make comments about the airport. We're aggressively going after improvements at the airport, along with Larry Brown and Charlie Kavler, who's been real instrumental in, in getting funds to, to provide infrastructure, beautification. Everything's going to be going on in that airport. It's been a long time since anybody addressed that airport, and with, I think there's something on the agenda today where we're going to approve some funds that are going to go toward the airport to improve it. People fly in here and they need to see something great when they land, not just old livestock barns and other places. We need, we need to clean it up. And I'd like to thank GBIC, which is a Greater Brownsville incentive corp, and BDC, the Brownsville Economic Development Council, for joining in with our city manager and being aggressive on providing funds to redo our airport, to get it to where we want it to, where 10 years from now, it'll probably be the best airport in the valley. So, you know, this, we want to let you all know that your commissioners are out there working. We are talking to a lot of people and getting things done, contrary to belief.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Garza?
Thank you very much. Yes, I want to touch on the airport also, and I would like to ask Mr. Larry Brown to please come forward and to give each of the commissioners a copy of what you gave me earlier this, this morning. I'm on the Airport Advisory Board and, as an ex-official, and I'd like for you to give us an overview of the projects that are, have been ongoing at the airport. I want the citizens of Brownsville to know that Ms. Larry Brown and city staff, Charlie Kavler, Alisa Yala, everyone, have been working very hard on improving the airport. Parking facilities, the taxiway G, if you have a chance, you can drive by there. We, I think issued $11 million certificates of obligation to whiten and resurface taxiway G, which is the taxiway that, that's on the cargo area of the airport.
Leo, Commissioner Garza, so Larry Brown is part of your Commissioner's report, or is this an item that should have been brought before?
No, 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 no. He is part of my report, and I'd like to, for him, just to give an overview. That's all.
As Commissioner Garza requested, first of all, you have in your folder an aerial photograph of the airport.
Can't hear you.
An airport layout plan, a map showing the airport land the city currently owns, as well as an aerial photo showing building number 16. You also have a list of all 67 leases we have at the airport, a list of the proposed capital improvements to be considered in the future for implementation at the airport that Commissioner Atkinson was referring to. Some of the key things that have been taking place at the airport. For example, we expect to receive, and this is very important to the city, not just the airport, the overall city budget, we expect to receive an offer to lease and purchase the VF building within a few weeks. Active discussions are ongoing with regard to that. We expect to receive a proposal to purchase or lease the former Levi's building very soon. We have a lease-in process to lease the entire building number 22 to another rental car company and expect to present it to the City Commission in the early part of March. The former NeoPlan complex, which is seven buildings in one, four and a half of those seven buildings are leased. There's a significant amount of economic development activity that is underway right now, which we believe will result in additional use of those buildings for aviation-related activity. Economic development activity, we have activity underway to complete negotiation and establishment of a dual customs preclearance facility in the foreign trading zone, as well as the air cargo building. We have activity underway to establish a new aviation-related business in the new complex referred to. As far as passenger traffic goes, in 2007, we had 185,000 passengers, that's 92,000 employments, seven, sometimes eight flights, round trips per day. I would note to you, that's the second-highest number of employments in the 79-year history of the airport. Airfield improvements, we've designed and obtained FAA approval and are well underway on construction of an $11 million reconstruction of taxiway G, which is a north-south taxiway, former runway, on the airfreight side of the airport. We've completed the demolition of three dilapidated hangars and rebuilt the concrete underneath those sites with FAA funds to be used for parking additional aircraft as the airport expands. We have built with FAA funds two sites to accommodate two new general aviation hangars, which is also a part of the list that I believe you have a copy of that Commissioner Atkinson referred to. We've also completed leasing all but one office space in the Pan American Accounting Building. We've conducted 12 meetings of the Airport Advisory Board and 14 Saturday sessions of the Planning Subcommittee of the Airport Advisory Board. We've completed the acquisition of five parcels of land with FAA Part 150 funds and have several more that are in the process. I would note to you also, the detail that you get each month is contained in this report, which contains, not only includes the minutes of the Airport Advisory Board, but also descriptions of the various different projects that are going on in the airport. So for additional detail, you might simply refer to these. We, right after the Airport Advisory Boarding each month, we forward these to the city commissioners and the city managers. Be happy to address any questions.
Now, this is a report, and I gave Commissioner Garza the latitude to have you give this report for him, but we cannot get into discussion. Thank you.
I understand.
Commissioner Triani, would you like?
Could you report? Close that.
Commissioner, oh, you finished with your report, Commissioner Garza?
On the, Mr. Brown, on the livestock facility there, how soon do you think we're going to?
We have meetings. What are we doing here?
Well, Mayor, it's just, I guess, a form of current events and just for each of the commission members to try to update the constituency.
Can you get into discussion?
Classically, you would have to recognize each individual before you was spoke before the body. In this case, I guess technically you didn't represent Larry Brown to speak. I consider this sort of a shorthand way of getting the message across from Commissioner Garza, but technically, it's not according to the rules of Robb's Charter.
I gave you the latitude, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Respect that.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown.
Commissioner Triani, would you like to say a few words? Or do you have additional words you want to say, Commissioner Garza? I, I'm not trying to cut you off, I'm just trying to follow the procedures.
I want to commend State Senator Eddie Lucio III. He wrote a letter. Excuse me?
He's a rep, not a state senator.
State representative. Eddie Lucio III. He wrote a letter to, to the governor in regards to the TechDOT, the financial, financial situation that we have. Loop, the East Loop cannot be completed until we get those funds, and he has urged the governor, requesting a special legislative session to convene the legislature so that we move swiftly to authorize funds approved by the people of Texas. So, thank you very much, State Rep. Eddie Lucio III. That's all, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Garza. Commissioner Triani, would you like to give a report?
Yes, Mayor. I want to take the time to, one, I'm glad that we implemented this process, and two, I think it's very important that we try to work together. I know there's maybe some disagreements or there may be some conflict here and there, but I think the most important thing is, is that we're unified in a lot of our major issues. And one of those is the, the border wall issue. I've taken the time over the last couple of weeks to contact and meet with Senator Kay Bailey Hutchinson's office, and also with the several members of the UTB board, and then also some security consultants that we've been talking to about alternative measures, instead of actually having a border fence, but rather working on some of these issues, such as the, the enforcement or reinforcement, bless you.
Bless you.
Reinforcement of the, the levy system. I think that it's very important that we, we try to show the public and also the nation that we are, one, committed to national security, and also to a method that would address the public concern, such as public safety, that would be implemented with a reinforced levy system, if possible. I think that would be a fantastic alternative and would provide a multi-use for the funds, and would also allow us to maintain one of the, I'd say, a less intrusive vista for the, the border wall issue, and would allow us to maintain our unique economic and cultural diversity. And now, one of the things that, that really kind of struck me when I was talking to some of these people with Hutchinson's office and then also with the UTB, was possibly the need for more coordination between our, our city government and these other bodies so that we can present a unified front. And I, I encouraged, I know several of the commissioners, I know the mayor himself has expressed that interest, but I think now is really the time to act, and we need to act as a group in order to push over these next few weeks so that we can address this issue and not simply give lip service to it. And that was one of the things that I've been working on over the past few weeks. I know some of the other commissioners as well have communicated with Homeland Security, and I really commend those efforts. And I think that as a community, this is something that we need to be proactive and unified on, and as well as the day-to-day things such as streets and these other issues, which are very important. But I think this is one of the things that is, is putting us on the national stage, and I think that for the national stage, we need to have a unified front and not digenerate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Longoria, you don't want to give?
Not at the moment.
So then we're going to go to the proclamation. City Secretary, is there somebody here from IHOP?
Item seven, proclamation, IHOP National Pancake Day.
Were they contacted, City Secretary?
I believe Bill Young handles that.
Is Bill Young here?
Yes.
They said they'd be here, Mayor.
They said, well, why don't we wait a little bit? Maybe they're running late. How about the other employee of the month?
Presentation, employee of the month.
Mayor, members of the commission, please help me welcome our employee of the month for February, Victor Mosenada, and he works at the Planning Development Department under the direction of Ben Medina. Victor has a unique. for more coordination between our city government and these other bodies so that we can present a unified front. And I encouraged, I know several of the commissioners, I know the mayor himself has expressed that interest, but I think now is really the time to act, and we need to act as a group in order to push over these next few weeks so that we can address this issue and not simply give lip service to it. And that was one of the things that I've been working on over the past few weeks. I know some of the other commissioners as well have communicated with Homeland Security, and I really commend those efforts. And I think that as a community, this is something that we need to be proactive and unified on, and as well as the day-to-day things such as street and these other issues, which are very important. But I think this is one of the things that is putting us on the national stage, and I think that for the national stage, we need to have a unified front and not digenerate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Longuardi, you don't want to give...
Not at the moment.
So then we're going to go to the proclamation. City Secretary, is there somebody here from IHOP?
Item seven, proclamation, IHOP National Pancake Day.
Were they contacted, City Secretary?
I believe Bill Young handles that.
Is Bill Young here?
Yes.
They said, well, why don't we wait a little bit? Maybe they're running late. How about the other, Employee of the Month?
Presentation, Employee of the Month.
Mayors, members of the commission, please help me welcome our Employee of the Month for February, Victor Mosinada, and he works at the Planning Development Department under the direction of Ben Medina. Victor has a unique responsibility, and for more than two and a half years, he's been working on, as a homeless coordinator for the city. As such, he works closely with Social Services, provides, provides and administer to the needs of the homeless. He's got a tremendous relationship with entities that address this kind of a need, such as the Good Neighbor Settlement House and Texas Family Outreach and the Brownsville Adult Literacy Council. He does a wonderful job for us, he's helped in this field, he's even been given the distinct honor of being selected the Vice President, as Vice Chair of the Cameron County Homeless Partnership. So we congratulate Victor for his efforts and offer him the cap.
The pen.
In recognition for outstanding services rendered to the City of Brownsville for the month of February, presenting this fifty. And he's got a lengthy speech to give, so we'll let him talk. He's also awarded the Employee of the Year Award at our banquet, and of course, we'll take him to lunch and make sure Ben pays.
Congratulations, Victor.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Very much. Well, man, a few words. City Manager, would it be okay, in the future, if you put a little synopsis in the packet?
The packet?
Of the employee, who they are, and, you know, what it's all about, okay? So a note before we get here?
We'll do that, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to...
Item nine.
Item nine, public comment.
Item nine, public comment.
We have two?
Yes, sir.
Joe Wallace Garcia?
First of all, good evening, and my name is Joe Wallace Garcia, Mr. Sineros. You mentioned streets. Couple of years ago, I came, you weren't around, most of you weren't around, and I pleaded with the commission. One of the biggest problems, you fix the streets, good, they look beautiful, but what happens in two or three weeks, the eighteen-wheelers tear up. We call the police department, police department says they're delivering items, we can't do nothing because the city ordinance says that they're delivering, and they have a right to deliver. Okay, so I'm asking you, pleading with you, we've got to fix our streets. For you, the commissioners, for you and mayor, to name two persons from your district to serve as an advisory committee. So, because we've got to fix them on the streets. I replaced the front end of my van the other day, about a month ago, and it's already shaking because I traveled California road. California road is close to the airport, there's no truck signs. You call the police department, they're delivering. So we've got to change that. Commissioner Sineros, you mentioned five-eleven. Remember five-eleven in Dakota, and Duckberry has a school there, so they got to take that consideration, and I'm the president of the parent group of the schools, so we got to know where that's to...
Excuse me, Mr. Garcia, we are not supposed to address a single commissioner, just address the commission as a whole, if you would, please?
Okay. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Okay, so...
Jim, Stella can't be doing your job, bud.
That's the wrong part of county.
Yeah, and I'm talking about five-eleven FM 803.
Hmm?
I was talking about five-eleven Office 803.
Order, Commissioners, please be recognized.
Well, five-eleven starts in 1778, so it's...
To discuss.
Can I get into discussion, Mr. Wallace?
Okay, so I just, I plead with you again, gentlemen, Harlingen and McAllen, they don't allow those eighteen-wheelers in their city. They allow them outside the city, so we've got to change that ordinance. Their ordinance is about thirty years old, and it needs to be reviewed, so please appoint two members from your district to serve in a committee, and you probably can get three, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Mr. Román Pérez?
I've been attending meetings since the last runoff, last year, and I think I've only missed maybe two meetings in that time. I attend meetings because I enjoy watching democracy in action, even though some say there's been a mockery of democracy made. Oh. It's not for you. Yeah, I didn't think so. Sorry. It's okay. Okay, I got this all over you. Even though some people have said that some of you have made a mockery of democracy here, I don't believe so to a certain extent. I believe you all are hard-working individuals, and you all try your very, very best to do what you feel is necessary. In those seven months, I've come up here a few times to speak in front of you, bringing up various topics, some of them negative, some of them positive. In fact, I remember coming up here one time urging you all to use Robert's Rules of Order, and I commend you all for doing this and using Robert's Rules of Order. I have tried my very best not to be abusive in any way, shape, or form, in coming up here every single meeting and speaking in front of you. You all see me in the audience, watching you all, making notes, watching, being a watchdog, essentially. I have not tried to make this public comment section my three minutes of fame. Now, you wonder, well, what are you going to talk about? Why are you here? Well, I'm here essentially to make one plea, one plea of one of you, and to abide by the rule, I won't say who I'm talking to, but you all know who I'm talking to. You've made one particular comment about me in public. You've said things like, my tongue needs to be cut out and fed to dogs, very, very rude comments, not, very unbecoming.
If you're referring to me, that's not true.
I'm not responding.
I don't know who you're referring to.
There's no need for discussion or answer.
You keep looking at me, but that's totally not true.
And let me reiterate, Mayor, what the City Secretary said.
And I think he's making an attack here.
Whom, whomever, I mean, the point of the whole public comment period is to not make it a private comment, but to address public issues and issues of public concern and not to address them to any one person, even if they're not named.
Just by his statements, it's implying that one of us here, and I don't know who,
but I know it wasn't me, and I think that's an attack on this commission.
I didn't give a name. I didn't give a name. I'm just saying that I believe I've been made this comment because I'm planning on removing one of you. I've overcome a challenge, I'm disabled, I have neuromuscular disorder, I graduated with a perfect grade point average, a bachelor's and master's degree, and I will overcome this challenge of trying to remove you. And I did not appreciate these comments, and I've been told by very, very, very important people that you've said these things about me, and I don't appreciate it, and for the public to know that there is a movement, and it will be made, and we will overcome whatever challenge we have. And I want to say one last thing. This commission is working very, very hard for the individual people of this community in spite of what's going on with the antics and whatnot, and I commend each and every one of you for doing what you do. I really do. Thank you.
And I want to reassure the public, we have the utmost respect, and I've always had the utmost respect for any speaker that comes up here, whether I agree with him or disagree with him. And I don't know who the gentleman was referring to, but if he has something to say directly to me or to a commissioner that may have been disrespectful, I encourage him to confront it, because a lot of people can say things, and it's easier to say behind somebody's back than say it to their face. We have cowards who do not confront their accusers. So it's important, when something like this is done to somebody, that they confront their accuser. And based on that, I want to welcome anybody and everybody who has comments to say in this commission respectfully, never attacking, and always, hopefully in a constructive manner to help this city. Do we have, no, we have no more, right? Okay, the next item, City Secretary, the gentleman from IHOP did not get here. No, well, read the proclamation, and I will personally deliver it to him.
A proclamation of the City of Brownsville declaring February 12, 2008, as IHOP's National Pancake Day in our city. Whereas Shriners Hospital for Children is a national nonprofit organization committed to giving children the opportunity to live a more normal life, and whereas Shriners Hospitals for Children gives children the opportunity to receive free treatment for orthopedic problems, severe burns, and spinal cord injuries, and provides them with a head start in developing a normal life that is essential to becoming successful and contributing adults, and whereas on February 12, 2008, Shriners Hospitals for Children and IHOP will join together to encourage people to donate to Shriners Hospitals for Children activities in our city. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all citizens, do hereby proclaim February 12, 2008, as IHOP's National Pancake Day, and further urge all our citizens to make themselves aware of this worthwhile project that benefits many of our children. Done on this, the 12th day of February, signed by Mayor Pat Almila Jr. and City Commissioners.
Thank you. Make sure you get it to me, City Secretary, and deliver it. Next item, please.
Item ten, mayoral appointments to Brownsville Housing Authority.
Mayor, may I interrupt you just for a quick second? Just as a point of order, or I guess a point of business. Apparently, they're not going to have a quorum for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so they won't be able to convene their meeting, and I don't know if you want to just acknowledge that and allow...
What we could do, City Attorney, continue the meeting, perhaps till tomorrow, if they can be here, if not, we'll just, if that's acceptable to the commission.
Well, we probably need to re-notice the meeting if we're going to...
Not if you continue the meeting.
I don't know if it's possible to get a quorum here tomorrow either. Ben?
Should we take it?
My only concern, Mayor, is we have people waiting in this desk here, and if we're not going to have a joint meeting, then the commission can proceed and finish out.
Ben, they're not going to have a quorum?
A person hasn't arrived that said he would be here to make the quorum. I asked Mr. Garcia, our City Attorney, if we could have discussion from the P&amp;Z, and you could render action, to have your public hearing, I mean, you can have a public hearing.
Ben, let me ask you this. We can proceed with our meeting and continue with the joint meeting at the end, if you think we will have a quorum towards the end, or we can continue the meeting tomorrow if you think we can have a quorum tomorrow if the commission...
What I would recommend, Mayor...
Or we have to redo it, repost it.
What I would recommend, Mayor, if we cannot have discussion tonight, just schedule it for the next available meeting.
That's fine.
And that way, Mayor, we can bring the three items back on the 19th, two weeks from tonight, and hopefully the Planning and Zoning Commission will be here or have a quorum here, but if not, the City Commission can take executive action at that time.
Well, Ben, just work it out, whatever's convenient for them is okay with me.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, item ten...
Item ten, mayoral appointments to the Brownsville Housing Authority.
Okay, just to keep my commission informed, I'm appointing Oscar Cabasos to the Brownsville Housing Authority. He's a retired teacher, and I think he will do a good job. Okay, item eleven.
Item eleven, consideration in action on the possibility of removing airport...
I have a question, okay? Is he replacing someone, or is he, was there an opening?
The judge said that Chris Valdez had a conflict of interest, so he resigned. So I'm putting Oscar Cabasos in his place.
Congratulations, Mr. Cabasos.
Pardon me? Oh, you hear Mr. Cabasos? Okay, would you like to say a few words? This is Mr. Cabasos, ladies and gentlemen. Fine young man, a good friend, and I know you would do good. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for considering me for this position. I feel very honored, and I've always tried to do my best for the city of Brownsville, and I consider this a very good chance, and promise to try my very best. I wish you all good luck too.
Thank you, Oscar.
Congratulations.
The only thing I ask is, of all the board members I appointed, Oscar's integrity, transparency, and accountability. Thank you, Oscar. Next item, eleven.
Item eleven, consideration in action on the possibility of removing airport advisory board members and appointing replacements.
Commissioner Charlie Atkinson.
Yeah, we'll put this on the agenda because of Ishan Avrose. I don't know if y'all got a copy of Ms. Tara Rios. She resigned from Airport Advisory Board. I'd like to appoint Joseph Yost to start a term...
Second.
Where is it?
In place of Tara Rios.
Commissioner, I guess I made a motion to appoint Joseph Yost, and we have the second, but Commissioner Sineros, any discussion?
No, we're ready to vote, I mean, do you have any comment?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay, as stipulated by the commission. Item twelve.
Item twelve, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2008-001 to rezon from Dwelling Z to Professional Office G classification, 0.894 acres out of Block 13 of El Havin subdivision located near Old Port Isabel Road and Warwick Glen Street.
Our mayor and City Commissioners, the lot, the lot is here shaded in red, it is Old Port Isabel Road. If you recall, last meeting, we had a karate school occurring here in this particular lot, so this is right adjacent. In this particular case, the applicant would want to have some professional offices in that location, so they come out right now. The Planning and Zoning Commission will now seek to approve this recommendation to you.
Close public hearing?
Second.
Okay, first of all, is there anybody here from the audience opposing this? No? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Longuardi to close public hearing, and second by Commissioner Sineros. All in favor to close public hearing?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This is an action item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Garza, and second by Commissioner Sineros. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Item thirteen, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2008-002 to rezon from Dwelling G to Medium Retail G classification, 1.460 acres out of Block 20 of El Havin subdivision located near Boca Chica Boulevard and Central Avenue.
Our mayor and City Commissioners, this is Central Avenue and Boca Chica, and here is the lot, asking for the zoning change, and here they want a convenience store, City Park is right across the street from that. The Planning and Zoning Commission will now seek to approve this recommendation to you. They do want a convenience store.
Okay, this is the public hearing.
Would you close?
Is anybody opposing this, or is speak in favor? Okay, we have a motion to close by Commissioner Camarillo.
Second.
Commissioner Sineros, second by Commissioner Garza. Any discussion on this matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Would it approve?
Second.
All, a motion by Commissioner Atkinson to approve, and second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item fourteen, consideration in action to acknowledge fiscal year 2008 first quarter reports for the Veterans International Bridge System at Lost Amata.
Mayor, Commissioners, I believe you have a copy of that report. The county staff, Pizapula and David Garcia couldn't be here, they got scheduling problems. If you look at the report, bridge crossings at the international bridge in Lost Amata totaled 533,088 for fiscal quarter of 2008. The figure includes the amount of cars which total that amount. Crossings for the month of October, November, December, fiscal year 2008 show a decrease of 109,791, or 70% over the same month in fiscal year 2007.
But this attributed to new policies by Homeland Security?
That's my understanding, the concerns about crossings and the unaware issues relating to what they... to what they need to cross and things like that might be causing some of this decrease.
Okay, could we possibly get the report on the other bridges? Hopefully, maybe we can unite and send this to Homeland Security to let them know how these policies are affecting us here.
I'll sit down with Pizapula and David Garcia, and we can do that, Mayor.
That'd be great. And also, if we could get maybe, I don't know if the sales tax will indicate also a drop, or a fatal to me the projection, if that can be made available also, it'd be good to include in the report. Okay?
Yes, sir.
We dropped the letter, and we can sign it, and get it out there to Homeland Security. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 15, consideration in action on resolution number 2008-024, requesting that the Texas Legislature...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we didn't approve this.
I move that we approve, acknowledge it.
Commissioner Leo Garza makes the motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Traiani. All in favor to approve, as stated here in the agenda?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item 15, consideration in action on resolution number 2008-024, requesting that the Texas Legislature and the Texas Congressional delegation continue to strive to improve the quality of life for families of Texas, and promote good stewardship of our country's energy supplies and natural resources by taking swift and responsive actions, encouraging recycling and recovery of invested energy stored in recyclable materials.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, is that right?
Yes.
And second by Commissioner Garza. Any discussion?
Can we close this?
Mayor, I just want to say that...
It's not a hearing.
I just want to say that, as you know, the city, very in a short amount of time, has seen recycling efforts increase, and the efforts of the community on the rise, and so this resolution was given to Mr. Cavla. We've been working on this with Mr. Kubrel, who would like to see Brownsville be put on the map in terms of our efforts to promote recycling, promote initiatives throughout the state of Texas, and hopefully grow our own initiatives here with the City of Brownsville. And so with that, I'd ask the rest of the commission to continue to support recycling, and hopefully increase our efforts in this area.
Okay, does anybody else wish to be recognized in this item? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Item 16, consideration in action on resolution number 2008-025, suspending enforcement of the sections of ordinance 1452-A prohibiting trailer signs for a 90-day period.
Mayor, Members of the City Commission, just an effort to respond to the direction that we received from the City Commission, it was my understanding that the commission didn't want to repeal a part of the ordinance, and didn't want to change the language of the ordinance itself, but in order to give businesses, and particularly the political community, an opportunity to adjust to these new limitations and these restrictions, to give them a grace period and to refrain from enforcing the tractor-trailer sign prohibition in our existing sign ordinance. So we just tried to do it in the form of a resolution, which you should have a copy of there. If there are any changes, or if you want to reword it, then you can tell us now, and we'll be happy to make any changes that you want.
Okay, could we maybe, before the 90 days out, have a workshop on this, that way we can come back and really address this issue?
Sure, at any time.
Invite the Beautification Committee, that way we can really look at what is it that we're going to accept. That way, next year, we're not faced with the same thing that we want to repeal it for 90 days or something like that. Either we enforce it, or we don't.
Well, we have one component...
Set up a criteria that everybody can live with. Okay? Okay, can we have a motion?
I need discussion.
Well, there needs to be a motion on the floor before we can discuss.
Yes, let me have a motion. Do you make a motion, Commissioner?
Yes.
Are you making a motion?
I'm not.
Motion for what?
In order to discuss, you need a first and a second. I was just asking for a workshop.
I don't think you need a motion for that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Garza?
I withdraw my motion, I'm sorry.
Do we have a motion over here?
No.
Okay, we don't have a motion or a second?
For what? To discuss this.
In order to discuss this, we need a motion.
Yes, I want to discuss this.
Okay.
Would it approve?
Make a motion.
I move to approve.
You make a motion, okay, and we have a...
You don't have to approve a discussion, you just kind of acknowledge the discussion.
Would you please educate the Commissioner?
Would you please explain?
Yeah, Commissioner, it's really just...
Give attention to the City Attorney, please, let him speak, and he will educate us.
It's really a question of form, Mayor, but you're correct, or Commissioner Longuardia's correct. We would first move to pass the motion, or to pass the measure. At that time, there'd be a second, and after following that, before there's a vote, you would allow discussion.
So we need a motion, a second, then we discuss.
I believe Commissioner Longuardia moved to pass the resolution.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Garza seconds it. Just because you make the motion doesn't mean you're going to vote for it or against it, it just means that you want to discuss it, okay? So now, anybody wants to be recognized to discuss this item? Commissioner Traiani?
Mr. Garza, when was this ordinance passed? Because it was my understa... You make it sound like it's a new thing. Is it a recent change in, as far as the signage?
No, the original, the comprehensive sign ordinance that's in effect was passed, I believe it was the final form, January of '07, so a little over a year ago.
Okay, and at this point, the idea is simply to put a moratorium in effect, and then it's going to then reinstitute after 90 days?
Well, the resolution would just suspend enforcement of that provision of the ordinance. The ordinance remains as written, but we're just not going to enforce that portion of the ordinance. And I don't know how procedurally to do it unless you want to change the ordinance itself. And as the mayor suggested, that, you know, this ordinance was endorsed by literally a thousand business members in the community from the Better Business Bureau. It was unanimously endorsed by the Better Business Bureau, and Beautification Committee, and other agencies that worked with the city. So my thought was that the commission's will was to allow for a grace period while the business community, the political community adjusts to these changes, which, while it's been there for a year, for 40 years before that, there were no restrictions of that sort. So sort of, I just, I assumed it was analogous to when you put a new stop sign up, a few people may blow through there just because they're not yet familiar with the stop sign. But that was the only way procedurally I knew to provide for a grace period, or use the word moratorium, on the enforcement of that one issue.
Now, then we're going to have the same problem when we come up into November, because there are some Republican candidates on the ballot. Correct?
That's right. The 90-day period would lapse, and then the ordinance would be enforced as it's written, which prohibits tractor-trailer signs. No, be correct? Okay.
Okay, Mr. Rubio was involved heavily with this ordinance, where his organization was. I believe, Mr. Walsh, you want to say something?
Yes, a matter of question, Mayor. Would you please invite the Republican chairman and the Democratic chairman to this workshop? That way, you can give you feedback.
It's open to the whole public. Anybody's welcome and encouraged to participate. Mr. Rubio, would you like to say something regarding this?
No, my only comment was that the runoff election for this March primary date is April the 8th. 10 days after that runoff would be the time they remove the trailers, so the moratorium would probably be closer to 73 days, it would be nine days, but if that's your pleasure, whatever, not how many days you want, it's up to you. But we just didn't want to get into the May election, because we're already having some issues at the time.
So hopefully, we'll have a workshop before then and make it come to a consensus. Is there another commission wants to be recognized in this? Commissioner Atkinson?
Well, we put this on the agenda. So last week, when we voted on something, none of that counted, or what?
My understanding was that you were voting to resolve that you weren't going to enforce that portion of the ordinance. And that's how I prepared it.
Okay, so this came back to enforce that, or what?
Came back to show you the language that was used in that resolution.
So as far as right now, it's been approved, right?
This resolution would approve the suspension of...
Okay, say we didn't approve this. There's still, what did we approve last meeting? That's changing from this meeting.
If I may...
Well, let me talk to him.
What it is, is a technical, what you're doing is a technical procedure here, because last time we did approve to have the moratorium there, we feel it for 90 days. You're bringing it now to formalize it in a resolution form, because it is the law of the city. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Because you're educating us. Was this discussion, or was it not? Is that a debate?
Oh, well, if I'm being questioned, and any one of you has a question of me as the parliamentarian or as...
Gentlemen, I do conduct the meetings, and I wish you'd have that respect to give me that latitude.
Robert's Rules of Order says that you're not to involve yourself in discussion.
I'm still the chairman, I still conduct the meetings, Commissioner Longuardia, and I wish you'd respect this office. You don't have to like me, but respect the office, and I'm just trying to shed some light so we can get some clarity, and I think I did a very good job of it, okay?
Can I finish talking, or not?
See, your animosity's showing right now. Your animosity's showing.
Mr. Mayor...
Want to get cute again? You know, I don't understand...
Mr. Mayor, there's no need, no need for remarks like that. The thing is, is I still have the right to talk, and every time I'm talking, you want to jump in.
No, I recognize...
Are you going to discuss with me? We can discuss.
You're recognized, Commissioner.
Okay, I'm recognized, and why do you keep trying to...
Because I was trying, I was trying to bring a little light to the matter.
No, I totally agree.
And if you have a problem with that, I'm sorry, I'm still the mayor, and I still conduct these meetings, but I think you all are being a little petty, just a little too petty. Okay? Now, do you have something you want to say that of any substance?
Yes.
Okay? Please?
No, you don't think that's rude? Resent those remarks, Mr. Mayor.
Well, let's get away from the pettiness, and you address, ask the questions of our City Attorney.
I'll just tell you something. You talked about educate this commission, the commission is not involved, you spoke in the Brownsville Herald about how your commission failed to do this.
You're out of order, Commissioner, you're off of order.
You're slamming everybody. If you knew how to bring people together, there wouldn't be no fighting. But you failed to do that after you got elected. You failed.
Commissioner, I'm going to respond to you. If you want to discuss this with me afterwards, fine.
Let me talk.
If you want to put it on the agenda, we can discuss it. You're out of order. You're out of order.
Let me talk, and stop discussing.
You're out of order, Commissioner.
Then follow rules of order.
Okay, I conduct the meeting, not you. I'm the mayor, not you.
Follow the rules.
I conduct the meeting.
Follow the rules.
Listen to me. You want me to call this meeting to recess?
Do it, but follow the rules.
You don't have the votes to call it to recess.
As far as I know, I don't need the votes.
I'm happy to answer any questions I can for you.
That's, all I was asking is, this is going on top of what we did last meeting?
Yes, sir, it was an effort to bring it back and formalize it, because we needed to give it a resolution number. The last time, we had considered amending the ordinance, and that's what the item was on for at the last meeting. And because of that, ordinance took about two years to enact, and had the support of the entire business and administrative group involved, then I thought that what I understood the commission to say was that you didn't want to go that far, you didn't want to change the ordinance itself, but that you wanted to provide a grace period, or to use a kind of an inaccurate word, a moratorium, on the period of time during this election, so that people could keep the signs that they had already contracted to use, but would know next time that we, that that was the rule. If you want to have a workshop, or have myself, someone from Beautification, or from Better Business Bureau come in and present this to you, then you may choose to change the ordinance itself, but that would be a, you know, an involved process, and would involve public hearings and so forth. So my effort was just to try to respond to what I understood your will to be at the last meeting. We prepared a resolution, formalizing that, and brought it back to you with a resolution number, so you can review it. If we don't have it right, if we didn't state correctly what you're trying to do, then this is a chance to redirect me or tell me how you want us to do it.
The reasoning for last meeting was prohibiting, wasn't prohibiting trailer signs, political trailer signs. You know, right here, you put trailer signs, and I guess we got to get real technical on what's put here, because it was involving political tractor-trailer signs to allow them to do it while this process was going on. Commissioner Camarillo added to it, because there was a lot of politicians or candidates that were running that didn't know about this ordinance.
Right.
See, but right here, it just says trailer signs. But we got to be specific, because we don't want, a lot of the pictures Mr. Rubio brought up, none of them were of political signs, they're all like different signs across the city that are dealing with businesses. We still don't want those.
Well, the comprehensive sign ordinance is really complicated, and it breaks, it defines signs in a lot of different categories, off-premise signs, on-premise signs. As a general rule, we can't legislate against content. We can't say, you can have an off-premise sign, but you can only advertise political messages, or we can't really say, because of First Amendment and commercial speech restrictions, we can't say what a person can advertise on a certain sign, other than characterizing it as an off-premise sign or an on-premise sign. If someone has a tractor-trailer set up, that they're advertising something other than politics, then that's violating the ordinance for a different reason, not because it's a tractor-trailer, because it's an off-premise sign that's not permitted by the city, and doesn't follow all the rules that we have for any off-premise sign. And so, the problem that we had dealt with administratively was the political signs on tractor-trailers, and that's what we were trying to address with this resolution. If there are people using them for advertising for businesses and so forth, then that would be a different type of violation, and we would still enforce that.
So again, Commissioner, the target point here is the political tractor-trailer signs. So all we're asking is, formally, through a resolution, suspending that for 90 days. Let's come back at a workshop, revisit it, whatever the decision will be at that time, to either, you know, take that out, delete it, whatever, add on to it, and so be it. This is just a formal notice of saying, suspend it 90 days, move on.
Mr. Mayor, the title of the resolution just talks about trailer signs, but the, what's in the body of the resolution, you're very specific.
I tried to be.
And it says political, political signs. I'm okay with that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, unless there's further discussion. Do we want to pass it as proposed, or do we want to amend it? Or do we want to...
Well, let's just take the vote now, and let's see if it passes or not.
Okay, is there's no more discussion? Nobody wants to be recognized? All in favor to pass this resolution as stated?
Aye.
Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes as stated. Thank you.
Yes, sir, and I'll coordinate with members of you to prepare a workshop to bring back to consider the sign ordinance as a whole.
And be sure to bring the Beautification Committee into it, okay? Thank you. Next item, please, items...
Item 17. Item 17, consideration in action to acknowledge the Finance Director's financial statements and cash investment report for the City of Brownsville for first quarter ending December 31st, 2007.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Commission, we ask that you table this item for our next meeting, the 19th.
Okay, can we have a motion to table by Commissioner Garza?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Traiani. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 18.
Mayor, Mr. Gonzalez has asked me to read item 19 first. Item 19, consideration in action to adopt the plan of finance regarding the issuance of approximately $5.2 million in general obligation bonds for street construction, approximately $18.2 million in certificates of obligation, which includes $6 million for airport projects, $3 million for sports parks, $8.35 million for streets, construction, and public works equipment, $350,000 for one-fire department apparatus pumper, and approximately $500,000 for police building, remodeling, and equipment purchases.[1742.12] and ap, and approximately five hundred thousand for police rebuilding, police building remodeling and equipment purchases.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city commission, this is our first phase into issuance of general obligation bonds and certificates of obligation for the coming year. The, uh, there has been some change and maybe when we getting ready to approve the item, we can, uh, indicate this changes. And the changes that, uh, we're making, uh, this particular slide shows the, um, airport projects that, uh, the Greater Brownsville Incentive Corporation has agreed to pay. Uh, we still don't have a project agreement to that effect, but the members of GIBIC have indicated to me that, uh, they will, uh, fund the debt service requirements of this particular debt issue. The, uh, the first, uh, the projects that we're considering is the reconstruction of an American accounting building, parking lot for six hundred thousand, uh, construction of a car rental for lot B and C. One is four hundred thousand, is, one is forty-one thousand. Uh, relocation of existing maintenance and yard and removal buildings, four hundred thousand. Relocation of the livestock holding area, three hundred and fifty thousand. Construction of two new general aviation hangars on hangar patch sites for two point five million. The repair of air cargo terminal roof and reconstruction of a parking lot, seven hundred thousand. Uh, demolish the old customs building, fifty thousand. Signage on Boca Chica and terminal access, exits, uh, three hundred thousand. Latchcape improvements, a hundred thousand. Overlay of terminal parking lot and re-striping, fifty thousand. Contingencies, two hundred and nine thousand. Now, there's a footnote, um, there and it says, uh, according to Mr. Tubbs, Tom Spurgeon, he's our bond counsel. Uh, the Attorney General's Office has stated that the, that this project, and I'm referring to number twelve, which is the renovation or demolition or reconstruction of the green and white structure, that, uh, this is possibly ineligible to be financed under the certificates of obligation because the building will not likely be used directly for airport purposes, but instead will be leased to private entities who are not common carriers. Uh, I have spoken to Mr. Brown before the meeting and he indicates that, that, uh, this particular item will be used by, uh, a person that is associated with a common carrier. So more than likely this, this will change when we, uh, when we issue the, when we issue the COs. So if that's the case, then I show right now five point eight million, but very likely between now and I guess, you know, uh, the next meeting, which is scheduled for February nineteenth, we'll have that settled. So, uh, to, uh, just to indicate to you that GIBIC has committed to, uh, six million dollars. On our, on our next schedule, also has some changes of, and this is for general obligation bonds and certificates of obligation, which includes the last issue of the two thousand and one general obligation bond issue. The remaining balance is five point two million, five million two hundred and ten thousand. Uh, we expect to sell those, those bonds, uh, this time. Along with that, it, of course, it has the, uh, five point eight million, which could be six million for the airport projects, uh, which will be funded from the four A. And you also have the Brownsville Sports Park of three million dollars. The four A board has already approved the, um, debt service requirements on that particular issue. Uh, we have street construction, uh, has been changed from seven million to six point six million. Uh, and, and public works equipment is one point seven. The reason for the change is, uh, we have included four hundred thousand for the, uh, fire department apparatus, pumper and two pickup trucks for four hundred thousand. Then at the very bottom, we have police department, uh, projects, which are the, uh, building remodeling, uh, to the old municipal court, uh, it, it needs to be converted to a records processing area. It's about two hundred thousand and then we have a telephone system for the police department for three hundred thousand. And altogether is, uh, eighteen million or possibly eighteen point two million. Um, on our next slide, uh, shows, uh, the, uh, we will have several issues related to the, this particular debt. Uh, we have some property tax that we'll pay for the debt. We also have, um, other sources like the sales tax, which comes from four A and four B, that will pay the debt retirements of those particular projects that I just mentioned earlier. Along with that, uh, towards the, uh, left bottom of this particular schedule, it shows that, um, uh, there is a possibility of a tax increase if we do not do any restructuring. Uh, if we restructure, that means that we refund some bonds. And in the refunding of these bonds, what we're doing is we're, we're moving some of the, uh, debt obligations further down the scale. So that will keep us from increasing the, the debt service tax rate. Uh, right now, the, the tax rate that the city has is sixty-five zero five seventeen. Uh, as you can see in this, this schedule, debt service is forty-five point fifty-nine percent of the total rate or twenty-nine sixty-five ninety-two cents. The, um, this particular schedule is, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to pass out what I have so that you can be able to see.
Thank you, Pete.
I'll show you my page I'm referring to.
What page are you on now?
Oh, let me, let me get one more. There were three cases, the, uh, existed, uh, debt schedule, and we have a case, case A and, and case B. On page seven, well, maybe it's not page seven. I'm referring to, uh, page, uh, two of seven. Uh, this particular debt service schedule shows the, uh, the current, uh, schedule that we have right now without issuing any debt. Uh, as you can see on column M, line nine, the debt service rate is twenty-nine sixty-six. With no debt issuance, the, uh, the following year, which is two thousand and nine, and I'm looking on column M, the, uh, the tax rate would be thirty fifty-seven, which is very small increase between fiscal year two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine. On case A, the, uh, and I'm going to go back to, uh, column M, line ten. Uh, as you can see, there is a tax increase in the debt service rate of two point eight six cents. Uh, on case B, with restructuring, meaning that we would go ahead and refund some old bonds, the rate will stay the same, almost the same. Column M, and I'm looking on page four of seven, uh, it'll be twenty-nine sixty-six. So our recommendation obviously is to go ahead and, and refund the, uh, bonds that are listed on the following page, which is on page, uh, five, uh, following four of seven. Uh, this are the debt that would be refunded so that we can go ahead and restructure, uh, the, uh, the debt service requirements and which will obviously not require a increase in our, in our debt service, uh, tax rate, which is, uh, obviously, uh, excellent for us. Um, again, uh, this all depends on page two of seven. If you look on column B of that particular schedule on two of seven, uh, there is a, uh, the net assessed valuation. As you can, you can see on column C of that particular page, it shows very conservative increases on our, our values or our tax roll. Uh, we have been increasing, our, our tax roll has been increasing, uh, higher than what we are projecting here. So we feel very comfortable with this particular numbers. Um, finally, on, on page five of seven, uh, this is the timetable. Uh, February fifth, we are presenting the plan of finance to you tonight. Uh, next meeting on the nineteenth, we would ask you to adopt a resolution authorizing the publication of notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation. It requires two notices. One would be on February twenty-fourth and the other one on March second. And then there are some other meetings or, uh, things that we need to do. Uh, on, in particular, March eighteenth, we have a, a meeting scheduled, or we will schedule a meeting with the rating and insurance companies or go through a conference call. Uh, and down the line, April first, uh, where the city commission would adopt the ordinance to sell the obligations. And then May eighth is when we have the closing and when we say closing, that's when we get our, our money from, for this particular debt issuance. Uh, and, uh, that really concludes my presentation. Uh, obviously, we, we, uh, we recommend, based on the changes that I've made tonight, whereby we go ahead and allocate some of the money for, for the fire department, which includes a pumper and two pickup trucks along with monies associated with the police department, five hundred thousand. And of cour, the others are the public works equipment and streets. Uh, we are obviously, uh, uh, issuing quite a bit of money for streets next, this particular year. Five point two million for the general obligation bonds and then, uh, the, uh, six point, uh, six for, for the, uh, for the streets construction plus equipment for public works.
Is that, is that, is that your presentation right there?
Yes.
Can we have a motion?
Someone would approve?
A motion by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Akerson to approve as stated. Uh, is there any discussion? Does anybody want, wish to be recognized?
I just want to ask-
I have a question.
Wait, wait. Who wants to be recognized?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Commissioner Triony.
As far as the monies for the airport, I think you'd indicated that there, there's no agreement in place for that, for the funding from, uh, I think it was the, the GIBIC, correct?
The, uh, GIBIC has, uh, has met and they've given the green light to, uh, to help us with the, uh, debt service requirements of a, a six million dollar debt issuance. Uh, Mr. Brian Jennings, the counsel for the GIBIC is, uh, preparing the project agreement. And this project agreement is scheduled to either, either they'll call a special meeting this month or have the, uh, meeting in, in March, uh, with the project agreement. And all, all the, uh, projects that they fund, uh, go through what they call a project agreement. And, and to answer your question, we don't have that project agreement, but they have indicated to me that, uh, or to us, that, uh, they will fund the amount that it takes to, to, uh, to take care of the debt service or retire the debt service.
What I'd like to do is, is possibly amend the motion to include that, well, this is going to come back to us for review anyway, right? Automatically we'd have to, it would come back to us for review to approve the agreement, the contract between June Baker and herself?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to clarify that that would occur.
Does anybody else wish to be recognized?
I just want to ask you, Pete, um-
Commissioner Sizneros.
By doing this, uh, we'll keep our debt ser, debt service, uh, tax rate at the same level?
The debt service tax rate, based on these calculations and again, based on several assumptions, uh, based on the current interest rates that we have right now, that is correct. That the, uh, debt service tax rate will remain as is.
That's my only question.
Okay, does anybody else wish to be recognized?
I wish to be recognized.
Okay, Commissioner Longoria?
Part of the reason for going out for general obligation on street construction is also the rising cost on materials right now. With the money that we had in the past, we could do it, but now with the rising cost of material, we need a little bit of that extra money to be able to complete it. So it's not that we're going out because there's been no fiscal responsibility with the money that's been there. It's just that materials are getting harder to come by. They're a lot more expensive now because, due to the gas prices. Due, that's what's, that's why we're actually going out for this.
And interest rates right now are very, very favorable. They're very low, so that's-
So right now it is.
Commissioner Sizneros, you wish to be recognized? Anybody else wish to be recognized? Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve as stated. Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, item eighteen now, uh, please, secretary.
Item eighteen, consideration in action on resolution number two thousand and eight dash zero twenty-three, expressing official intent to reimburse with tax exempt obligation proceeds for costs associated with acquiring and constructing various improvements to the city's airport.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city commission, this reimbursement resolution allows us to, to proceed with the projects that are being funded, uh, by GIBIC, uh, through the, uh, CO. Uh, what this means is, uh, we can tell the airport starts working on some of these projects. Uh, the money will come from the general fund like a loan as, and with the understanding that the general fund will get reimbursed from the CO proceeds as soon as the COs are sold, which are scheduled for May, uh, of this year. So we, we certainly recommend that this reimbursement resolution, uh, be approved. Now, again, there is no project agreement in place yet, but they have reassured me that, that they will fund the, the debt service.
And I also the same thing, uh, Pete. Can we have a motion to-
Would approve?
To approve, we got a motion by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Garza.
Actually, I made, I made the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Commissioner Camarillo? Commissioner, Commissioner Camarillo made the motion and Commissioner Akerson, uh, seconded it. Any discussion? Anybody want to be recognized?
No, I do. We're only approving-
Commissioner Akerson, wish to be recognized?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank all the hard work our city manager and our city staff did to go out and talk to the members of GIBIC and the members of BDC to get us to, help us out at the airport. I don't know if you all know this, but pretty much we subsidize the airport every year. And I'm just glad this corporation stepped up to, to put money into the airport for infrastructure, for, for, for a lot of good things that, that you'll, you'll see in the next three to five years. So I just want to thank especially Charlie Cavan for going out and making this happen. And maybe you have something to say on that.
No, I appreciate the comments and I, and I, and I want to share that, uh, that thanks with the staff and everyone that, uh, participated and, uh, hopefully the agreement will be resolved. And, uh, hopefully we'll have GIBIC here at the next meeting to give, uh, their insight into this. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Garza, you want it to be recognized?
No, I'm just interested in the agreement.
Pardon me?
I'm very interested in the agreement when it's, um, written out. I'd like to look at it.
Uh, I think we all are.
Well, I thank you. Well, you know what I'm talking about.
Uh, does anybody wish, say anything else? That's it? Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item twenty.
Item twenty, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery and installation of fencing at the Brownsville Sports Park.
Oh, Mayor, City Commission, um, staff recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase, delivery and installation of fencing at the Brownsville Sports Park to Texas Department of Criminal Justice, uh, Correctional Industries, or TCI, of Huntsville, Texas, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-nine cents. This is, uh, deliver and install. Um, funding is in place, uh, for this particular procurement. The Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation, BCIC, will reimburse a hundred percent of this, uh, um, back to the city of Brownsville. Um, completion time for this installation will be a hundred and one, uh, consecutive calendar day.
Okay. We have a motion approved by Commissioner Longoria. Can we have a second?
No.
You said no?
Well, I'm, uh-
Can we have a second? If you, if we don't have a second, it'll die.
No. There's savings for the-
Is this for the, uh, for the sports park?
No, it will cover-
We need a second to get-
In order to discuss it, we're supposed to have a second, so if somebody wants to- I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, a second.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think I've said that several times already. Commissioner Sizneros, seconded now, uh, somebody wants to-
May, may I speak?
Certainly, Commissioner.
Thank you. This fencing is for exactly what?
This fencing will, will cover the, uh, the skate park and five softball fields at the, at the sports park that is currently under, under construction.
Okay, and so this would be the softball field, the skate park, and it's not a, it's not perimeter fencing, it's simply a, a area fencing for those specific purposes?
That is correct.
Okay. And I believe, uh, Ms. Barrera is behind you. Uh, can you give us a little bit more information on this, just to refresh our memories?
Ms. Barrera, you recognize?
Again, the reason that, uh, BCIC is going with TCI is because there'll be a substantial cost savings. Uh, the contractor Spaglass allowed us to do this, uh, again, so that we could incur cost savings through TCI. TCI did, has visited the site and has, uh, worked with, uh, has sat and talked to Spaglass in trying to ensure that they can go on ahead and meet the, uh, the timeline.
What kind of fence is it?
Chain link fence. It's a type of fencing for the fields, for the ball fields, both for the ball fields and-
Wait, 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 wait. Uh, this is why you need to be recognized, we can have some order. Commissioner Akerson, you're rec, you, you want to speak, please, you have the floor.
Let me ask you something. This, this fence is going to go around the whole park?
No, sir. This is for the ball fields and for the skate- This is for the ball fields and for the skate park, BMX park.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else wish to be recognized?
I just wanted to make sure that that's what we were talking about.
You don't wanna be recognized?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Troyani, you recognize?
Okay, and we're, we're not getting the, uh, the wind shears, correct? We're not gonna have those?
The wind screens, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, a commission-
Are you approved?
Well, we are, so you already made the motion. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now, can we have a motion to table or no? Uh, I guess we don't have to do nothing with two, three, and four.
Well, look, if, I'm glad you all, you asked, Mayor. Ben, do we need to coordinate re-noticing those three items so we can have another joint meeting on the 19th?
Table indefinitely and then you come back?
Yes, Mayor, just, just table and-
Okay, can we have a motion to table indefinitely?
Motion table.
Second.
Motion, and second by Commissioner Camarillo. Commissioner Troyani made the motion. Any discussion on this? Okay. All in favor to table, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So do.
We have a motion by Commissioner Longoria to adjourn.
Can I do your mayor's report?
Pardon me?
Your, no, okay. Second.
We have a measure, uh, second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, can stay. Thank you.